Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of Kettering City Council. Today's date is June the 22nd, and as always, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin tonight's meeting, we'll pause for a brief invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for all who serve the Kettering community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so we may continue to serve our citizens with integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of these responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Next, we'll move on to approval of the minutes, June 8, 2021, council meeting and workshop meeting minutes. Mr. Lauder.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed both minutes from the council meeting and the workshop from June 8 of 2021. I find both in order and therefore move for their approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Bring down color roll, please.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker.
Yes.
Mr. Clepass.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes. Next, we'll move on to proclamations. Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a proclamation, whereas scleroderma is a chronic connective tissue disease which affects an estimated 15,000 Ohioans and 300,000 persons in the United States. And whereas in scleroderma, a patient's immune system becomes overactive and attacks its own tissue through the overproduction of collagen. And whereas scleroderma can develop and is found in every age group, from infants to the elderly, but the onset is most frequent between the ages of 25 and 55. And whereas it is a very individualized disease, and the symptoms range from very mild to life-threatening. And whereas scleroderma can cause thickening and tightening of the skin, as well as serious damage to internal organs, including the lungs, heart, kidneys, esophagus, and gastrointestinal tract. And whereas prompt and proper diagnosis and treatment by qualified physicians can minimalize the symptoms of scleroderma and lessen the chance for irreversible damage, but there is not yet a cure for this disease. Whereas, there are five scleroderma foundation support groups in Ohio, and the scleroderma Foundation's mission is to support education and research to help find the cause and the cure of this disease. Now, therefore, Donnelly Patterson, Mayor of the City of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of this council and the community, does hereby proclaim June 2021 to be Scleroderma Awareness Month in the City of Kettering, and we urge all citizens to bring awareness about scleroderma with the hope that a cure will soon be found. Signed, Donnelly Patterson, Mayor, on the 22nd day of June 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. In accepting the proclamation, will be Wilma Wills and Demi Montgomery, both with a Ohio chapter. Please, come on up.
Looking for the flip.
If you'd like to say a few words, please.
Okay, this is gonna, this is on?
Yes.
Okay. I always say scleroderma is a heart disease, and it's hard to say. So you did good. You're welcome. Well, on behalf of the scleroderma foundation Dayton area support group, we would like to thank Mayor Patterson and city council for declaring June as scleroderma awareness month and helping us spread awareness of this devastating and complex autoimmune disease. Fundraising is a large part of what we do. This year, there are six virtual walks, two golf outings, and a bowling event planned. Approximately 1,500 people attend our Hoperaisers. Funds are used towards research, annual patient education days, and conferences. As mentioned, the Virtual Fund Run and Walk 2021 is scheduled for Saturday, August 7. Registration information for all the Hoperaisers can be found at scleroderma.org/Ohio. With Hoperaiser events, we can spread more awareness of scleroderma and raise funds for research towards finding a cure. Thank you again, Mayor Patterson, for declaring June as scleroderma awareness month. We really appreciate your recognition and support.
Next, we'll move on to public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing on an application to rezone land at 4225 and 4235 Wilmington Pike, from R4 multifamily, R1 suburban residential, and BP Business Park to O Office. The planning commission recommended that the application be denied. The planning commission's certification packet is made part of the record. First, city staff will make a presentation. Then the applicant will have an opportunity to present. After those presentations, we will take comments for or against the application from those persons who are present tonight and wish to be heard. This time, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And any person that intends to speak to city council tonight about this matter should stand, raise your right hand, and take the oath. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you present tonight before city council in this matter is the truth to the best of your knowledge and ability? If so, say, "I do."
I do.
Please be seated. First, we'll go ahead and open it up to city staff for a presentation. Mr. Robillard.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you said earlier, this is, this particular request is to rezone about a .88 acre property from R1 in this area here, R4, and Business Park in that area, to O Office. As in, this particular property is located right at the intersection of Wilmington Pike and Woodman Drive, just south of where the El Rancho Grande restaurant is. As you might imagine, this piece of property is, might be very difficult to develop due to multiple challenges, including access, traffic safety, size, dimension, setbacks of the property. Access alone will require a reworking of the signalized, the signals at the intersection and/or access to another property, either to the north or to the south. Over the last 10 years, my staff and I have worked with Mr. Soliday to find, to try to find a development solution that meets both Mr. Soliday's intended use and to meet our requirements of the law, the zoning code, the direction of the Wilmington Pike Improvement Plan, and the comprehensive plan. Today, we really have not come to a common solution. David Roller is going to present next briefly, and we'll review how, review the zoning code requirements for which staff and the planning commission must follow in order to make a recommendation of approval of the rezoning. As you will hear, there really is no other possible recommendation that staff or the planning commission could have offered in this particular case to stay compliant with city council direction from the Wilmington Pike Improvement Plan or the zoning code.
Thank you, Tom. For those who haven't seen me in a while, I'm David Roller, city planner, one of the city planners here at the, at the city. What we have on the screen is just a snippet of the codified ordinance, which is section 1153, dot 12, dot 6, dot A2. I know there's a lot there, but that it's the full citation. That is this code section that directs planning commission on what to do in cases of rezoning applications. And what it says is that, "No rezoning of land from a residential zoning district to any non-residential zoning district," which is the case in this matter, "shall be recommended by the planning commission unless the site is at least one acre, a complete block face, or the site is contiguous to land in the proposed zoning classification." In this particular case, as Mr. Robillard previously stated, the site is less than an acre. It is not a complete block face, and it is also not contiguous to any O Office zoning district. As he previously showed on the screen, it's contiguous to business as well as R1. And therefore, that those findings cannot be made, and planning commission was required to make a recommendation not to approve the rezoning application to council. Thank you.
And just to conclude, for the record, the planning commission did recommend that this case be denied. That concludes our presentation.
Any questions of city staff? Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the applicant's presentation.
My name is Ron Soliday. I live here at 441 Lots Road, been resident of Kettering about 25 years. Owned small businesses, Great Harbor Bread Company, Village Bread Company, and then became a financial advisor. I have worked and lived, oh, my two, I have worked on Wilmington Pike. My first office is 3,600 Wilmington Pike. So I've been 10 years on Wilmington Pike from 2005 until 2015. Are you all familiar with the area that we're talking about? In 2005, that's when I started to work on, in my office at Wilmington Pike, and Mayor Patterson actually did the ribbon cutting. That was, if you remember that one, that was pretty nice. After being there for about five years, around 2010, I decided I didn't want my own office, and I wanted it on Wilmington Pike. It seemed like at that point Wilmington Pike was the central business district of, with more small business owners on it and such. And I became acquainted with the folks at Kitchens by Design, Miles and Kathy Johnson, Eretech, Doug Conan, just a lot of business owners up and down the area, and decided that I want to start looking for my own office. So in 2010, as my five-year lease was coming up, I engaged and went to, it was Desi at the time, I think this building was being renovated 10 years ago, and Ron Hunt, who I know from a previous zoning, was up there. So I went up to see Mr. Hunt and told him what I was looking to do as far as an office. And he guided me for about, I don't know, four, five, maybe six months. Also in that time, that's when I met Mr. Robillard, there was a, like an outreach from planning and zoning going to different parts of the community, talk about what are the plans. And I think I got three or four of those things, and almost every one of them, remember what side of Kettering we were on, north, southeast, or west, wanted to know what was going on with Wilmington Pike. So it seemed to be someplace that had a lot of economic interest and a place that I wanted to have my office. So the place that, you know, Ron Hunt did steer me away from some places over on Dorothy Lane by Governor Square, over at Schroyer and Dorothy Lane, that wouldn't have been appropriate. And what we landed on is this place at 4225, 4235. The businesses there at that time were Fleming's Printing, been there for over 20 years, and Hiddle Home Improvement. Now, the 2008 financial recession was devastating. Folks at Fleming's Printing had moved out of the building and moved up the streets, but Hiddle Home Improvement just basically went out of business, probably around 2008. So with Ron Hunt's guidance, what I've got in front of you here is an email received from him. This email is dated October 11, 2011. He carbon copied David Roller and Tom Robillard. And what the first part of this was, was the design that they had put together at Kitchens by Design. He was trying to give me guidance, and I ended up, you know, hiring an architect to do the work. So if you can read the highlighted parts, once you get down to the meat of it, it says, this is October 2011, before I bought the property. "Staff is recommending that O Office designations be sought, which would not include retail activity nor contractor offices. David Roller will be handling the request." So what this is, is upon getting encouragement, approval, I thought for what would be an office, just not more than half a mile down from my current office was on Wilmington Pike. This is the, what they call the D to receiver. It was the day we closed. We purchased this property. It was from PNC Bank, it was in receivership. And we closed on it December 2, 2011, about seven weeks after the memo. And then the third exhibit comes about a year later. And this one happens to be from David Roller. And I have all these put together, I have all these put together for council. And this is dated December 12, about a full year after we had purchased the property. Started cleaning out, getting renovations ready, and working and approaching the staff with the rezoning. So what I highlighted once here is, this is from Mr. Roller. "Once these obstacles are able to be overcome, we should be able to offer conditional recommendation for approval." The last paragraph, "Once the task necessary to bring the property into compliance are achieved, the property would then be rezoned and allowed to be used as desired." So that's where I started. So through 2012 and 2013, we hired a young architect named Matt Franklin with Lebanon Porter to do the drawings and represent our wishes to the city. And that's, that's kind of the first drawing there, and you can see it was dated June 13. And he, he was meeting with the city at that time. Second part of that is that, according to the architect, the things that he was putting together to do would have run about $115,000. He came back to me from this meeting extremely frustrated, and the words that I remember him saying is, "The city just wants you to go away." He was kind of flummoxed by this whole process, and I was a little taken back by myself. So I instructed Matt to then, okay, put everything together the city wants. Just do everything they want, whatever they wanted to do. They want two curb cuts, put one curb cut. You want, you want the garage demolished, you demolish the garage. You want more parking, more curbing, more shrubs, more bushes, just go ahead. Just put it together. Let's see what the city wants. He put it together. Price ballooned over $300,000, more than tripled. So that brought a lot of people together to discuss, you know, are we trying to, you know, when I started this process, I bought a dilapidated property, think I'd be embraced in taking something that was dilapidated and rundown and making it into something for the city. And just to show, I'm going to have a picture here for you, just to refresh your memory of what the three buildings look like. None of them gems, that's for sure. The building on the top left, historically, that was the model home for all the homes built behind. The building to the right of that, top right, that's the old contractor's office. That's a pretty ugly building. In the back was a cinder block wall, they'd keep materials in their offices up front. And then somewhere in time, I don't know how they got it, but they built a three-car garage and tucked it back there in the corner. So those were the buildings. I realize the setbacks, you know, weren't going to meet anything, so we just kind of went through with the planning and kept working with the city. It progresses slow. If you, if you look at this, you'll see that, you know, 2011, we bought it, 2012, we're talking 2013, we're just starting to negotiate with the city. And I got a, I got this phone call from Ron Hunt, and this was after the June meetings. And he basically asked me if I would consider putting a brick facade on all the buildings, something's terminology called "brick sauce." And after seeing the price triple, I declined. I said, "No, I don't think I want to, I don't think I want to put bricks on all those buildings. I'm not even sure we're sure those buildings are even going to persist, but I don't want to put bricks on those buildings." And that's when things went 180 degrees south. So that was summer of 2013, or I'm sorry, that was summer of 2012. This is the April 1st, this is the first zoning attempt at getting the zoning going, dated April 13, 2013. The part that applies is this, this is the 180-degree turn that I got from the city. Under the terms of background, it says, and I quote, "Staff conveyed to the applicant that the zoning would be problematic at best and unworkable at worst. The applicant was also strongly advised not to purchase the property for its intended use." That never happened. That's why I put the memos up first. Further, the site would require significant modifications or even complete demolition and rebuild to comply with standards of the office district. We couldn't get anywhere after hiring architects and attorneys. General Murrell Wilberding was trying to work out something with the city, and that didn't work either. You know, it was just one of the most frustrating experiences of my life, still not sure what So we had entered talks with the city. They offered to purchase it for a price that was less than half of what the value of the property was, so we could not come to terms. So we demolished the property in the thought that if we started from scratch, brand-new investment, we would probably get the zoning office that we're looking for. Here's that staff report. This time, it's April 16, April 4, 2016. And again, the same verbiage with a few other things added to it. Basically, the same thing that staff conveyed to the applicant, rezoning would be problematic or even unworkable. That conversation never happened, my friends. Down here at the bottom, since the city has torn down and removed the improvements to the property using city funds allocated in the 2013 Wilmington Pike Improvement Plan in city council, this demolition removal was pursued jointly and cooperatively both by the applicant and the city. The city was then subsequently contacted by the applicant to potentially purchase the property. The city did participate in negotiations and did not come to an agreement. So now, we're here today. We're, we've got the same, we've tried everything, you know, we tried business designation because we were next to businesses, and that didn't work. We tried demolishing properties, coming back new. I'm not even sure of all the things and why they didn't work, why they wouldn't work. But it comes down now to today's. And they are basically saying that because the property is not an acre, which I think is kind of an arbitrary number, doesn't qualify to be rezoned, and it's not contiguous to another office, so it doesn't qualify to be rezoned, and I don't know what a block face is. Can anybody tell me what a block face is? And why it doesn't, what is a block face? Anybody?
Phil, just give me a second. I will pull up the official definition, which is in our zoning code.
Tom, can you speak up a little bit here?
Just give, if you just give me a moment, I'll pull up the official definition, which A unit of land bounded by streets or by a combination of streets and public land, road rights of way, waterways, or any barrier to the continuity to development. Basically, it is from street to street, or a, what you would typically call a block face, across street to across street.
Like a city block?
Yes.
But it doesn't have to be a block. It can be smaller unit than a standard city block.
It could be, depending on if it met the other criteria.
So those, I'm still not very understanding what a block face is, but to me, the, the other requirements of, with people working at home and the blurring of, you know, what is work and play, what is work in home, what is office in home, what is verbo, what is, you know, people renting out rooms in their home, I don't know what that does to zoning, but it's contemporary to what's going on now. So... This is just now the staff report, and I just kind of have to kind of go through it on what things are important to them. And what this section is talking about is the recommendations, rebuild commercial should be concentrated at intersections. So I did attend, as much as I could, the planning on Wilmington Pike. So I think it was Jim Burns, former owner of the Carpet House, was a member of that And that's when you're coming up with the things you could do to try to resurrect Wilmington Pike. And what the Wilmington Pike Plan was emphasizing and what's being detailed in the staff's report is they want commerce concentrated at intersections. And it's a little bit difficult when you think about it. Wilmington Pike, I think the speed limit's 35 to 45. So if you're on that corridor and you have business there, by the time anybody knows you're there, they're passed. So when I look at this, Wilmington Pike Commission, Wilmington Pike Plan, basically picked out Stroop and Dorothy Lane in Wilmington Pike as the intersections they want developed. Those are developed. Those are fully occupied, which makes sense. One of the reasons I chose that is an intersection. One of the parts in the staff's report basically says that we want these things clustered around intersections and we want strategic weeding, which has certainly been accomplished. There's a lot of vacant lots on Wilmington Pike now, a lot of successes, you do our brewing, kitchens by design, there's a lot of the housing project that was there, I think there was a motorcycle shop that's pretty successful there too. But I don't think it's wide enough. There are five major intersections on Wilmington Pike, starting with the south location at, if you look at the map, I just put a sticky note on it. From Wilmington Pike and Woodman, there's 26,900 cars a day, and this is the 2015 MVR-PC traffic count. The next one north is Stroop in Wilmington Pike, and it swells to 40,100 cars. The next intersection, which is more of a T-intersection, maybe a Y, is Wilmington Pike at Marshall with 25,200. And then the next one is the busiest in the county, that's Wilmington Pike and Dorothy Lane with 46,000 cars a day. And then finally, kind of terminates up at Wilmington Pike is Smithville, as they split off. Wilmington Pike goes kind of northwest, Smithville goes north with 28,800. So I would think that, you know, it does make sense to concentrate business around intersections. And one of the staff's complaints was, "We have way too many office space. Why don't you go buy an office space? Or why even create another office space?" And I'm creating an office space at an intersection. That's the most appropriate, I think, reasonable use for that property. I also have, this is, this is now a 10-year-old little document. This is from Sandy Fleming. She and her family worked at plumbing, or plumbing printing for about 20 years there. And in her letter here, "In our 20-plus years at Wilmington Pike, Fleming's Printing, we found the two curb cuts worked very well for both gaining access to the business and safely leaving the property. The north curb cut allowed northward travel to Wilmington Pike when the lights stopped the Wilmington traffic, allowing Woodman to flow southbound, which is south and of the north curb cut. The south curb cut allowed customers easy and safe access to the south. In our 20-plus years of operating our businesses there, we had safe and adequate egress and To me, to somebody that, you know, has been there for those 20 years and worked and had customers come to see them, I just think that speaks volumes to it. Let's see. There's another part of the report, and I'm, you know, this is, this is a 30-page report. And I've got notes here on the things that I was going to talk about. One of the things, it seems like there's a conflict between the high-density residential, which is the R4, and the site-location sub-regional commercial. You know, it's a hub, there's Myers there, there's all kinds of commercial activity going on in that area, and mine would just be a complement to that. I don't know what the solution is to comprehensive plan that has a contradiction in it. It's something the council has to settle. What are we going to do with this? How's this going to work? Another thing in this report is about sole interest, that I have, I'm the only person that benefits from this rezoning. Really, nothing could be farther from the truth. Back in 2012, 2011, 2013, contractors would have welcomed the jobs that that renovation would have brought. I personally watched a lot of people in the trades just go out of business. One of the reasons we have a housing shortage today, because they have not built homes. The part that I showed the planning commission, again, it's another sticky note, part of the sole interest, I learned this from David, I didn't know it. I thought property taxes went to the city, but only a small part of property taxes go to the city, if any. I'm still not sure if any goes. What it goes to is schools. So what I did is a quick calculation. After we couldn't get the zoning, we went to and got our taxes reduced, reduced further when they were raised. Part of the, of being part of this community is, all my kids went to school here, all the way through, Amburran, Southdale, Fairmont, all of them. They're all graduated, have solid jobs, went to local colleges. But part of it, part of the community is what the property taxes give. And if the property would have been allowed to have been renovated and brought up to some type of use in commercial, I'm estimating right now with none of that, that right now, over $39,000 over these past 10 years have been lost to Kettering schools because we weren't allowed to develop the property that we were encouraged to buy. So it's not sole use. The employees that I would have there, the four of us, solid, the other business that we might attach to the side of it if we're allowed to build out, do the business, the taxes from that, and the 400 families that I work with in this area. You don't know me from a pile of wood, but when I started my business, I didn't have a single customer, didn't have a single nickel, a single dime in deposits in a brokerage firm. And from that, I've grown it to over 400 families, just from walking up, knocking on the doors, meeting people and finding how gracious people would be to strangers and trust them with their life savings in retirement and children's education. So that's all we've been trying to do. We've just been trying, for now a decade, to secure a zoning on a property that was totally dilapidated, now it's a vacant lot, it's producing no income. Matter of fact, Steve, Wright and Schreider, you're this city engineer? I think I would like in this public forum to ask you to show me where I can put my curb cuts back on my property. Because on the demolition, I feel like I've been manipulated, and I am just a novice at this, but I gave up two curb cuts, which I now realize are very critical to have. Because I assumed when I demolished this property and came back with a new proposal, that the curb cuts would be allowed and the new proposal would go forward. None of that has happened yet. So right now, I'm maintaining a property and my lawn guy has two choices, jump a curb or trespass. I don't know how he's doing it, love the guy, he's a great guy, but he keeps the lawn, he keeps everything clean, picked up and at grass, but I have no curb cuts for him. So what I would ask you formally, right here and now, is to sit down with me in the next few days and show me where the city engineer department would feel it's safe to put two curb cuts.
Okay, before we go any further, it's a public hearing, not a question and answer.
Well, I did this exactly because it's a public hearing. I have had experiences where I've been not in the public and either on the phone in closed-door meetings, and nothing comes to fruition.
Curb cuts are a wholly separate issue than what the council is here to hear tonight, so that's an inappropriate colloquy, Your Honor, and I think Mr. Soliday should move on.
Okay. Well, those are the main things I wanted to cover. It's hard to encapsulate 10 years and make it cogent so you can understand what's going on or understand, you know, the frustration. I'm not a developer, I'm just a regular guy. I saw a dilapidated property, I took encouragement from the city, both Ron Hunt, David Roller had kind things to say about the property, it could happen, back in 2012. As far as I'm concerned, the Ron Hunt memo put Tom Robillard, David Roller on notice, and they had ample time to run up to me and say, "Whoa, big fella, stop. You're going down the wrong path, it ain't going to happen." And that didn't happen. So it is a reasonable use at that intersection to have a property that's zoned commercial. I think it's a reasonable use to have it as a business, but we're doing it as a zoning office. And the office is also a better buffer, as the residents on the south are looking at a bar/restaurant to their north. With the office being there and the landscaping, I think it might be just a better community. I just think it's an appropriate use. And everybody from the new zoning attorney I've engaged and talked with, to other commercial developers, I'm tilting at windmills. They're telling me this is probably not going to work, and I just don't know. I'm happy to answer any questions while I'm here. That's the end of my presentation.
Anyone have any questions? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll open it up for comments by the public. First, we'll start with the proponents. None? Any opponents? Anyone wishing to speak? Okay.
I do have a question.
At this, can I take a question?
It's up to you, Your Honor, if you want to entertain a question. It's highly unusual for a presenter to question the council that's going to be deciding on that, but if you want to entertain it.
The timing question, what's the process from here?
Counsel will take the matter under advisement and then make a decision at a future meeting.
Great. All right, thanks a lot. Appreciate your time.
Just really wanted to just, what Ted said, "The public hearing is now closed. City Council will consider legislation regarding this matter at a future meeting." With that, we will move on then to public comment on legislation. Anyone wishing to speak before counsel with comments or new information about legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to counsel. If you have comments that are not about legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone like to speak in regards to legislation on tonight's agenda? Okay, being none, we'll move into ordinances and second reading. We have none. Resolutions, we'll begin with Vice Mayor Clepass.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution this evening, accepting the findings and recommendations of the Fact Finder in Surratt Case Number 2020-MED-10-1127, and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Kettering Professional Firefighters International Association of Firefighters Local 2150, consistent with those findings and recommendations or as modified by mutual agreement of the parties. It's requested by the Human Resources Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to accept the Fact Finder's report in regards to the collective bargaining process with the fire department. The Fact Finder's recommendation is a wage increase of 2.5% in year one, 2.5% in year two, and 2.25% in year three. The wage increase for the fire captains will be retroactive to the start of the contract period, which is essentially December 20th, 2020. The Fact Finder did not recommend an increase in additional days off, although two days were requested by the fire department, by the fire union, and the Fact Finder came back with no increase in days. There also will be a provision for write-up pay for firefighters who are performing the duty of fire captain for an extended period of time of their shift. That is $1 per hour. The city staff and fire department are recommending approval of the Fact Finder report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Sweeterman? Being none, color roll, please.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase electric vehicle charging stations and related services through negotiated quotes or a cooperative purchasing program. This resolution is being requested by our Public Service Department. The estimated cost is $77,848. That is the amount budgeted, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergstrasser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize the city to purchase, install, and service several EV charging stations to be located at Aldelco Park and within the Kettering Recreation Complex. The city recently received a $45,000 grant from the Ohio EPA Diesel Mitigation Trust Fund to offset the cost of this project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Bergstrasser? Being none, color roll, please.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract for technology and other improvements in the clerk of the Kettering Municipal Court's offices. The estimated cost is $27,432. It is also what is budgeted, and it is requested by Mr. Rob Scott, the clerk of court, and I move for approval.
Second, Mr. Rob Scott.
Mayor, counsel, thank you so much. Just to let you know what you're, before you today, is something in my office that I hold near and dear. It was identified when I took office that we do not have a second emergency exit in the clerk of court's offices. As you can imagine, in a court atmosphere, we have some citizens that may not be exactly happy and may do something not so smart. And one of my roles as clerk of courts is the safety of all the deputy clerks that serve under me in that office. So what this allows for is an emergency door, which gives a second exit. It actually goes into a dead space there in the old property behind the task force. And with that, there's some improvements that needs to happen with our fire alarm system, our regular alarm system. As you can imagine, it's pretty involved. Additionally, since we're in that room doing some updates, some painting needs to be done, some tech updates, I'm having a training kind of smart board installed in our conference room for training materials, and all of that is a part of this resolution before you tonight. One thing I'd like to underline, that this is not Kettering General Funds revenue nor Capital Improvement Funds revenue for the city of Kettering. This is specifically out of court fees and court fines. It goes into a special fund that my office manages. So you are just authorizing the city to actually enter into a contract in order to have this work done. And then last- is specifically out of court fees and court fines. It goes into a special fund that my office manages. So, you are just authorizing the city to actually enter into a contract in order to have this work done. And then lastly, I'd like to thank city staff, specifically Rob Baker and Dave Durich, for getting this done. That's all I have. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Scott? Being none, color roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the first tranches of American Rescue Plan Active 2021 ARPA funds and affirm that such funds will be expended only to cover city of Kettering expenditures for eligible uses, consistent with the requirements of ARPA Section 9901 Public Law 117-2. Estimated cost, $6,925,760. Funds available, zero. Requested by the Finance Department, and I move for approval.
Second, Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will accept the first payment or the first tranche from the American Rescue Plan, approximately $6.9 million. We received those funds a couple weeks, and as you know, we are working with you and with staff to begin the process to develop plans in regards to how we might spend the American Rescue Plan money over the next several years. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Sweeterman? Being none, color roll, please.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Next, we'll move on to ordinances in first reading. We have none. Certifications and petitions. Ms. Kozinski.
Your Honor, we have one certification this evening. Planning Commission recommends vacation of PC 21-007. Request for street vacation at the northeast corner of Wilmington Pike and Brownlee Road. A public hearing regarding this request will be held on Tuesday, July 13, 2021, at the Kettering City Council Meeting.
Thank you. City Manager report community update. Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a few items for you this evening. The first is just to remind you that the Phrase season is not quite underway, but tickets are on sale. And patrons, residents, customers can go to phrase.com or etix... that's etix.com to purchase shows. We've mentioned just a few of the shows on the slide tonight. Hairball will be the first show at the Phrase Pavilion on July 22. The ever-popular menus will be back at the Phrase this year on July 30. And then Trace Atkins will be on Sunday, August the 8. So, again, we encourage everyone to go to phrase.com or etix.com for tickets to Phrase events. We're also very happy to report that we'll be returning to having the Go4th event at Delco Park. It will take place on July 4 at the park, and as you can see, it will start with our normal activities, the Kids Fun Zone at 6 o'clock. There'll be food trucks. And then we'll have two bands that evening, music from Southbound at 6:30, and then the Rockland Road Group at 8:20. And then at dark, we'll have our fireworks show. So, again, we're excited to have Go4th again this year. The July 4 holiday will be a closed day for the administration. Will close on Monday, July 5. The trash pickup service will be delayed by Rumpke that day as well, that week. So, Monday will become Tuesday and work its way through the week. Just a reminder that the city is allowing block parties this summer, and you can go to ketteringoh.org to get a block party... excuse me, get a block party permit, or you can call our engineering department at 937-296-2436. Our volunteer office is still accepting applications for volunteers who would like to work at the Phrase Pavilion or volunteer at the Phrase Pavilion this summer. They can contact our volunteer office at 296-2433. And our Neighborhood Pride Program is up and running again this summer, and you can nominate a neighbor or a business again at ketteringoh.org or calling our volunteer office at 296-2433. So, we're happy to report summer is back this year. And lastly, Your Honor and members of council, I would just like to welcome our new economic development manager to the staff, Amy Shrimp, has started yesterday, and we're very excited to have Amy on our team. So, we welcome Amy to the team. That's all I have for you, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Sweeterman? All righty. Next, we'll move on to other business, not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak for council, please come on down at this time. We do have a five-minute limit. Okay, we'll move on to city council reports and update and begin with Mr. Wanamaker.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Patterson. I have an announcement to make. I will be resigning my seat as council member representing District 2, effective tonight for health reasons. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the city of Kettering and this council for the past 18 years. This council and staff are good stewards of the city's facilities, infrastructure, services, and money. This council and staff works tirelessly to provide the best for its citizens, and I'm proud to have been a part of it. And that's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clepass.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yesterday, Monday, Bill Lauder and I were able to attend the ribbon cutting and support Mayor Patterson, who was one of the featured speakers, at the opening of the new Kettering Health Years Ahead Health Center over on Stroop Road. Lots of folks have been asking about what's going on on Stroop Road across from the post office. Kettering Health has built a beautiful facility, but as Fred Mancher says, it's more than brick and mortar. It's the people that will be working there and providing a great service to our residents who are 65 years and older, who are part of that Years Ahead group. So, it's gonna be a terrific addition for our city and a beautiful improvement for a site that has been sitting empty for a long time. Also, as always, as things improve, and all you have to do is look at the parking lot at the Town and Country, keep supporting our local Kettering businesses. And in the last two weeks, since our last meeting, there's been quite a few people who have retired. Bill Ford from the Kettering Fire Department, Greg Gorsuch, our economic development manager today. It was Mary Lou Randolph who ran the volunteer program. And then tonight, we hear of Joe Wanamaker's retirement. I kind of quickly calculated the years of public service this group of four people had, and I came up with close to 250 years when you add them. I add them all up. It's a lot of service to our community and this whole area. So, Joe, I'll say adios to you tonight. 15 years ago, when I went on council, I really didn't know Joe very well, and we became colleagues at the time. And Joe was a great support for me as I transitioned onto the job and trying to find out where the restrooms were and everything else that went with learning a new position in the city. And Joe was really a great help for me there. He was always there to provide guidance and wisdom through his many years of experience in the city of Kettering and on the Kettering Council. But most of all, Joe's more than a colleague to me. Joe's a friend. I'm gonna miss working with you, Joe. And that's all I have.
Mr. Lauder.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will echo Councilman Clepass's comments about the Years Ahead Health Center. Beautiful facility. Hopefully, the citizens will take advantage of it. I know Tony and I have a few more years before we qualify for that age cutoff.
That's true.
Also, today, again, Councilman Clepass mentioned it, but Mary Lou Randolph, our volunteer coordinator, we had her retirement send-off. Very deserving, very hard-working person, invaluable asset to the city, and we will certainly miss her. And Joe, I mentioned it in our workshop. I'll mention it publicly. I'm winding up my eighth year on council, and you, from day one, have been invaluable to me, your years of experience, your knowledge, and you were always willing to answer questions or lend support if I had an issue to deal with. And I will personally miss you. Obviously, council will miss you, and the citizens of Kettering have been blessed by your service. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher.
Well, Your Honor, I like my other two. I'm definitely gonna be missing Greg Gorsuch, who is really a key part of our city council group, works with us. I'm glad to have Amy. Miss Greg. Miss... will miss definitely. Mary Lou, as I work on the volunteer advisory group with her. And Joe, definitely. I'm very saddened that you're leaving me, especially because we worked together in the Miami Valley Communications Council. And so, similarly, Joe took me under his wing, has kept me on the road there, and always covered my six when I was not able to get to the meetings and made sure I knew what I needed to know when I had to miss those meetings. I want to jump on the block party real quick. The Board of Community Relations is putting out ice cream again this year. I was surprised. Mark didn't mention that. That is one of the awesome cornerstones of the Board of Community Relations, that we want to encourage everyone to know their neighbor. And so, part of our push is to help by supplying ice cream. And like being a good neighbor, I will tell you, the Board of Community Relations is about inclusiveness. We read the proclamation last week, but I will tell you, last night, we met with four minority business owners, owner of Seven Spa, Blessed Hands, Tender Loving Daycare, and Dayton Fit Lab. And we met with those owners to get feedback from them about being small, minority-owned, small businesses. And I'll take your tagline, not only shop your small businesses, but I would encourage everybody in our community to not only shop at those minority-owned businesses and always make them feel welcome, that they're a part of this great community that we call Kettering. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of comments. We're losing a lot of good folks this week. Bill Ford served as fire marshal when I was on the State Fire Commission. He was not with us at that time. He was in another community, but he had a reputation statewide for his knowledge of fire service. And Bill contributed a lot, not only this community, but other communities. I worked for, I guess, all the years that Mary Lou Randolph and I were involved with the Kettering Leadership Academy. And I must tell you, she is gonna be difficult to replace. And when I think of the word passion for what you need to bring to the table when you come to work every day, it would be Mary Lou Randolph. We have worked very closely over these years, and we've interviewed together in the last six years every candidate in the Leadership Academy and prior to that, along with Bonnie Piddle and Mary Lou. And I gotta tell you, she has earned her retirement. I know she's gonna have fun relaxing for a while, but she will be sorely missed. When I came on council in 1986, the only person in this room that worked for the city of Kettering was Joe Wanamaker. And he's still with me today, and that's amazing. When I came on council in 1986, Joe Wanamaker had 26 years of experience with this community in the streets department. And for anyone that can work for a community for 62 years, combination of working and serving on your city council, Joe, we used to call Keith Thompson an institution, but you have redefined... you've redefined what that word means. I jotted down here, you know, how would I describe Joe Wanamaker? Just a good and faithful servant to this community. Created a number of programs, but I often think back to the leaf mulch program and our mulch program that is so widely accepted and loved by our citizens was Joe's creation. I just want to wish the best to you and Judy. I hope your health improves, both of you, and just know that you're gonna be missed, buddy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you did.
Thank you. Next, just to follow up on what all of council has pretty much addressed. I think the thing that stuck out to me as far as timing with Joe, this city is somewhere around 65 years old or so. The city is around that 65, 66 age bracket. And Joe has been here, serving this community, first as an employee, and second, for the last 18 years, serving on council. So, to me, that was just an enormous slapping the head to say, since this city's been around, Joe's been around. So, Joe, everyone thanked you for your service, your guidance, your experience. I remember you being with the street department, and if there was ever a go-to person, we always went to you on council, always, when we had issues or improvements with the street department or anything involved with that. You were able to dumb it down for us, so we understood what was going on. Joe's been unbelievably active in attending the programs, the meetings, the events, all the things that go with being on city council. And you've done it with a smile. Your wife Judy must be a saint. I know she's a saint. And I think it was Jackie said that you were always willing, and Bill, always willing to help. And Jackie said that you took her under her wing. There are a lot of people that you took under your wings in 62 years. And we wish you the best luck. We hope for yours and Judy's health to improve, and you can begin to enjoy those things that I know you love, be it golf, being your lake house, or whatever it is. And with that, I will miss you. Enjoy your time. Don't be a stranger. We're still here for a while, some of us, so thank you. Couple things. On the 10th, somebody talked about Greg Gorsuch and our economic development manager, and he retired. Greg was here the entire time that I've been mayor, so Greg and I were able to work on a lot of projects and do a lot of things, and Greg will be missed. While... excuse me, while he had some big shoes to fill, I think we found somebody that can do that. And, excuse me, we've worked with Amy in the past. We look forward to working with Amy in her new capacity, and we're excited to have you. So, thank you. On the 16th, somebody talked about... I feel like I talk about the same things, being the last one each time, but Bill Ford retired, and Bill was an asset to our fire department, fire marshal, and the things, and just a great guy, fun guy to talk to, always seemed to be up. And we wish him the best in his retirement. Fishing Derby. Fishing Derby was held and run by the Doorwood Optimists.
I think it's time for the...
I attended the fishing derby, but I did not have the pleasure of talking to three Doorwood Optimists.
Too many people.
Yes. So, but it was a great event. It was a partial... I think everybody thought it was gonna rain out, and Ron Lebatsky said he expected more than what showed up, was absolutely amazed at the number of people showed up. And I mean, there was 150 kids running around there. And it's a great event. They do a great job, gave the kids an opportunity... running around there. And it's a great event. They do a great job, gave the kids an opportunity to catch fish, and they had all kinds of categories for awards. One of them was the most fish you could catch, and there was a young man that had it down to a science. He had two poles. He had them in there. When he caught one, he'd reel it out, hand it to his dad, throw it back in, grab the pole when it came up, hand it to his dad. And last count, he had over 50 fish that he had caught between 9 and noon, and he received a trophy for that. And a young lady took home the largest fish 10 minutes... 10 seconds before the alarm was sounded. She pulled a carp out of that daggon lake about this big. It was probably a third of the size of her, but she caught the biggest fish. So congratulations to everyone that helped on that fishing derby. It was fun to see kids out enjoying Delco Park, screaming, yelling, doing all the things kids do, so congratulations on that. We had the opportunity, someone else had mentioned, to celebrate Kettering Health Years Ahead Care Center on Stroop Road. The staff is there to handle focus on senior care. And one thing I found out in preparing my speech was that 18% of Kettering is of an age to use that facility. And I thought that was pretty significant, that almost 20% of our population will be able to use this. And Kettering Health continues to amaze us with their services and making our lives, lives better. And finally, this afternoon, we said goodbye again to another person, Mary Lou Randolph, our city volunteer administration. She's retiring after 31 years. So she was another one of a kind and cared deeply for the city of Kettering, and we will miss her, and we wish her the best. And with that, if there is no other business to come before us this evening, our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on July 13. And with that, we stand adjourned. Actually, I called attention to some guys who were wisecracking last night about my age, that it's not... I'm not a senior citizen. I'm a youth.